It's Tuesday, March eighteenth and it's seven oh two and I do see we have our every quorum. So I know a couple, um, a couple of us were running out of meetings uh that we have. It's a very, very long week for um for many of us, um mainly because it is um crossstopper happen, so we're really excited to do all of that and we have a lot of community meetings also here in Mount Rainier. Alright, so I'd like to have a call to order. Um, let me see. Um, Luke's uh Chesek?
Here.
Uh Jared?
I am here, thank you.
Thank you so much Danielle.
I'm here.
Okay, and Valerie did let us know, did let me know that she was gonna be running a little bit behind. So um, thank you. So we have established quorum, it is seven oh three. I would like to move on to item number three, review of the agenda, Mayor and Council. We'll review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest. At this point, I'm gonna ask Councilmember Stoffes to make sure he reads the agenda for us and um go ahead Jared and read the agenda, please. And if you read it, you're on mute.
Alright, sorry about that.
No worries.
Agenda of the work session, Mayor and City Council, City of Mount Rainier, virtual work session, Tuesday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty five, seven P M. Items for discussion, number one, call to order. Number two, review of agenda, the mayor and city council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Number three, update and discussion on the thirty-two-hundred Rhode Island Avenue property. The mayor and city council will receive an update from Mister Fatih Guner on the thirty-two-hundred uh Rhode Island Avenue property, apologies if I pronounced that name wrong. Number four, presentation discussion on building application for thirty-four oh five Eastern Avenue, Mount Rainier, Maryland, two zero seven one two, the mayor and council have a presentation from the owner of thirty-four oh five Eastern Avenue, Mount Rainier. Number five, presentation discussion on community meeting and a ribbon cutting ceremony for Richardson Park. Mayor Selena Benitez will have discussion with the city council regarding the use of line item fifty-five oh five, city sponsored meetings to fund a community meeting and ribbon cutting ceremony for Richardson Park. Number six, proclamation proclaiming May seventeenth, twenty twenty five is Kids to Park Day. Mayor Selena Benitez will present a proclamation for Kids to Park Day. Number seven, presentation and discussion on resolution number one dash twenty twenty five, establishment of the Mount Rainier Community Garden Committee, the mayor and council have discussion on resolution number one dash twenty twenty five, establishment of the Mount Rainier Community Garden Committee. Number eight, presentation of minutes. Um, the city clerk will present the March fourth, twenty twenty five legislative meeting minutes to the mayor and council. Number nine, adjournment.
Can you also um read the list of events, uh Jared, as well at the end of the agenda?
Absolutely.
That uh we informed the community, thank you.
Absolutely. Upcoming events. Uh, just a reminder for folks that our budget and public hearing council work session is this Saturday, March twenty-second, twenty twenty five, starting at nine thirty A M. Uh, second event, community yard sales on Saturday, April fifth, twenty twenty five, eight A M to three P M. Uh, next item is egg hunt, Saturday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty five, eleven A M to one P M at the Mount Rainier Nature Center. Um, next item, city election day, this one's really important for folks. May uh Monday, May fifth, twenty twenty five, seven A M to eight P M, uh you can vote at the Mount Rainier Nature Center. Uh, next item, Mount Rainier Day, Saturday, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty five, eleven A M to four P M, uh also located at the Mount Rainier Nature Center. And that is it.
Perfect, thank you so much. And just a little bit of housekeeping, if any chances, um that call does get hacked like it did last time. Um, the the uh video call will be shut down completely and we'll be logging back in. So uh that is something that we have alerted the staff, you know, things that we do ask other team members not to share the count, not to share the direct Zoom link on social media, because that's usually how we get hacked. Right? Um, to share the calendar invite, um it's kind of a link to the calendar itself. That allows for at least an extra layer of um, an extra layer of security that uh protects us a little bit more. So um, just as I said, F Y I, so that we're aware of what the next step is, something like that happens. And we definitely want to apologize for last week. Um, I mean last meeting, but you know, sometimes things happen. But they get to our team that acted um pretty fast as well. Alright, so we're gonna move on to item number three, update discussion thirty-two-hundred block of Rhode Island Avenue property. Um, Alma, the floor is yours.
Mayor.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Kamali.
Yeah, uh just wanna let you know that Mister Fati is here with his team and he's fasting for Ramadan and he has to leave. Uh, think if we allow him to, you know, provide the information, that would help a lot.
Um, this is for number three, Mr. Kamali, a different number?
No, this is number three.
Three, correct?
Yes.
So, um.
There is no update from the staff, Mayor.
Okay, that's perfect, Mr. Kamali, thank you for that. So Mister Fati, uh can you um give us an update on thirty-two-hundred and welcome um, welcome to the meeting and we're gonna try to make sure we make this as um as sedacious as we can to make sure to respect uh your fasting as well.
Alright, Mayor, good afternoon, uh and all the uh all the members. I hope you all well and uh beside me, uh I believe uh Birmaiden and Iad Isak would have uh better knowledge of where we are standing in our permitting process, so I would like to give them uh a chance to give us full update.
Okay.
If you have any other questions, I'll, I'll, I'll be standing by, I'll answer them.
Alright, perfect. So who's gonna speak um first?
Bill, would you like to talk first?
Go ahead, Bill, the floor is yours.
Bill, you are on mute. Iad?
So I do have a mic open for somebody um with F G?
F G is me.
Okay, Fat, that's you. Uh, was it Iad Isak, the other person that was part of your team?
Correct, yes.
Alright, but I need either one of them to speak because I'm not hearing anyone but you.
Okay, uh Iad, can you, can you hear us?
Yes, uh, good, uh, good afternoon.
We are trying to get Bill online, but I see his name, but he's on mute.
Yeah, it sounds like Bill is having difficulty in his audio, but I can provide a quick update on the civil engineering side of uh things. Um, I had Isaac, the civil engineer on the project. Um, if if it helps, I can share maps uh when uh I'm uh explaining this, but uh uh the project uh is, the project site is located in the flood plain. Um, eighty-five percent of the site is in flood plain and uh the county has the strict regulations to build in the flood plain. Uh, I, we have prepared the study, mapping and the design drawings and submit them to the county for flood plain review uh two times and they've been reviewed and I met with the county uh flood plain reviewers um a couple of times to discuss the project and the approach, um address their comments and submit uh more detailed um and uh addressing their comments, um a third submittal was made last week. Um, so uh and I spoke with the reviewer yesterday and he acknowledged that he has received it and he's reviewing it uh right now. Um, he told me from um the initial impression that he has is we uh the the study looks good and we're um hoping that we can receive uh some good news, um but he has to go through the review in detail and there's multiple level of reviews uh beside him uh within the county, so that's in progress. Um, so uh as I said, the 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 site is uh in flood plain and and we have, we had to work as detailed analysis and work with the architect to accommodate what the county requires uh to comply with the FEMA um NFIP program uh that they apply, they comply with. So um, that's on the flood plain and basically it's the uh critical path for the project to get this approved, but they told me, uh I met with the flood plain man uh uh review uh department manager at Deep I and they told me they're supportive of the project, they like to see the project coming.
Can anybody hear me?
We could hear you now.
I can't hear you.
You're cutting off now, so we could hear you for about a minute. So Bill, can you hold on one second, Mister Matt?
While you are explaining.
You you guys, I only need, I'm sorry to apologize, I can only have one of you guys speaking at the same time. So Bill, if you give me a second, I think uh Iad was was doing part of the presentation unless you finish what you were saying and then I move to the next speaker.
Uh, Mayor, I just would like to ask, yeah, this is uh, this is Fati. I just would like to ask Iad also, yeah, if you can explain, you know, the the day that we had meeting until today, it's almost a year. Is this a regular process? Uh, uh that this takes so long, uh what is the reason? Because at the end, the way that I feel that they look at us like we are delaying the process or we are not paying enough attention to get this permitted.
So um if you guys could finish your presentation, I'm happy to answer whatever question is in behalf of council and soul will be Mister Kamali, right? Um, but if you guys could focus on filling out the presentation to fill us in, um it definitely will help. So last thing we heard was like different per uh permits were being, uh information was being submitted and it's gonna be review. And that includes the flood plain um documents that were submitted, right? The, were you guys given an estimate of how long the review was gonna be taken for those documents to be reviewed?
Uh, the, this is a third submittal, I've been working with the county, as I mentioned, they don't allow a buildings in a flood plain, they have a strict regulations to meet the three difficult, at least three difficult conditions, all all finished flood elevation needs to be above flood plain. Um, there is no rising of or raising the the water surface elevation in the area because of the that caused adverse impact to the neighborhood and uh provide volumes that was taken from flood plain. The the initial site was uh taken the entire, the entire, the initial design was taken the entire site, so there was not no place for meeting all of this. I've been working uh to develop a uh the um hydrology and hydraulic analysis that the county requires and we're very close to get to that approval. As I said, I met with the county man, the flood plain reviewer, uh manager and uh explained our approach and they they understand the project and what we're doing and hopefully we're we're close to get that approval, but I don't know. Uh, it's been taking several months, uh three rounds of review because my uh options are limited. Uh, the entire site is being developed. So um, but um, hope, hoping that we can get this approved and this will open up our path to the next submittals, including park and planning and other department in the county.
Well, I I will say to you that um in behalf of the city, try to C C our city manager when you submit stuff so that way the city could support any way they need to. Because if we are not in the loop of what's going on, there's only so much we can do to help, right? Even if it is like, you know, we have like several meetings through through the year with the various um, you know, key players and people that are in charge of the various things, right? Or we could suggest a follow-up meeting to give us a specific where projects are at. So if you could move moving forward, um you know, C C our city manager with it, at least will give us a sense of what is um, what is being asked, what is needed and in what way the city can support to make sure that you have that extra support um as you submit stuff, but also like we have an understanding of what's happening on the other end. Because um if we don't, um there's only so much we can do to help and in support and try to push on this project moving forward. Okay, and I believe uh Bill is logging out and logging back in. Is there any other document that you guys are submitting, you guys are waiting for approvals?
I, as I said, this is a critical path to get this approval. Uh, I submitted to Deep I the civil si- site civil designs and they have been uh reviewed and approved, but final approval needs this submit, this approval, so I'm waiting for the flood plain approval so I can, I can submit to get the civil site design approved. I also submitted to park and planning for uh for N R I and they also asked for the flood plain. So it's holding us up and it took um, as I said, multiple review, uh multiple submittals and reviews uh because of the complexity and um the limited options. Um, when when we build out the entire site and eighty-five percent of it, and if you allow me, I can show you a map that's helpful to everyone.
Yeah, um, Melly, can you give him a shareable access, please?
Yeah, uh. Okay, now I think I can share map, just to show you the magnitude of this site. Um, and here's our project in in red as you see it and the the dash red is the flood plain and.
Give us one second, okay, now we could see it, go ahead.
Yeah, so this thick red lines is the project boundary and then the dashed red is the flood plain and the entire project is in the flood plain, as you can see, not the entire, but majority of it. And nothing else I I have, we maxed out the development, as you know, from site plan. Um, and here's the proposed condition, shows you the project after being positioned and we pushed the water out to the alley in the back and that caused, the concern of the county, of course, is causing adverse impact to all of these houses. Uh, the entire area is in the flood plain, all those dashed line covers the entire area as you see him down to the east and further. Um, the, our analysis and what we, what we've done to accommodate this, address the county major requirement uh with not causing adverse impact. I am waiting for them to review that and approve it. And also the county required us to submit a waiver request that can be approved because it requires a waiver to build in flood plain. All those documents with this report that I am showing is being submitted for final review to the county. And I spoke with the reviewer yesterday and he acknowledged receiving it and acknowledged, he said it looks, his first impression looks good, so, but he's still going through that. Detail review, once I have this step approved, I will continue on park and planning and uh Deep I final design.
Okay, is there anything else you wanna present before I open it up to the council members, uh staff and community? No? Okay, so let me go to the to the council first, um and then I'll make sure I make a stop on the stop before opening it to community, because I, what I don't want is this to become a project that now like, you know, floods, the house starts locally there, because that alley is not gonna be able to take um much water. So I need to make sure that, you know, I could see why the concerns of the county are, it's definitely a concern of ours as well. And um, you know, we wanna make sure not to burden in any way, form or shape those houses that are there as well. Alright, so um Jared, I'm gonna start with you and I'm gonna move to Valerie, since this is war two, go ahead.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having, I'm having some connection problems, I'm trying to look at, can you go to Valerie first, apologies?
Okay, Va- Valerie, go ahead.
Um, yeah, thank you for coming in and and um updating us on where things are. Um, it sounds like the permitting is really uh slowing us down here. Um, and it's concerning because it's been sitting this way for nearly two and a half, three years, four years now. Um, and so I I do think that we need to, as a city, I don't, I mean, I would like the city manager and uh Mister Hopkins and uh Miss Farafino to work together to come up with a way to make sure that we're getting through these permit processes. Um, so I I really, I really think this is a concerning uh development, but um can we, can you guys talk a little bit about the timeline, once you get the permit through the flood plain reviews? What's the next step? Like, how long should we be waiting for shovels in the ground at this point?
I don't know exactly, but I know there are several, several approvals we still need after this is Deep I final um approvals, uh the park and planning and then uh Prince George's County Soil Conservation District, the 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 uh W S S C and maybe I'm not sure if if, you know, state highway may needs to to review it because of the state highway road here. Um, so it's unclear exactly uh to me, but uh this, this step is uh the more, the most complicated, the other ones are typical steps. Nothing challenging, I would say, uh this one was the challenging one.
Um, are we looking into potentially a year, under a year? I think that's more or less, even if you have a ballpark of what the estimate is after this is clear.
I would say probably a year, uh because those agencies uh they likely will take like two to three reviews, uh each one of whom, and we can submit once we pass this step, we, I will be submitting concurrently to them uh and addressing their comments, but uh year probably is a good estimate as, as I see it right now.
Okay, um Valerie, does answer your question, more or less?
Where, are we confident? Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, are we confident that this is gonna go forward once you get those reviews? I mean, I'm a little concerned about that.
Yeah, no, that's a good question and that was my concern um before um working on this flood plain issue because of the requirements. Um, I um like I explained to you right now, I explained to the county flood plain um department head, uh Mister De Guzman, uh our approach and the need for the project and he's supportive, but this is definitely a um the the challenging step, other steps are typical. Uh, once I pass this, um it will, it will move, there's no uh uh no difficulties in the other ones, they're just the standard.
Okay, thank you. Um, Jared, you ready for me to go to Luke?
Yeah, no, I am, I am. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, I appreciate you all coming in uh tonight. I I know this has kind of been a long arc for this project. Um, you know, our our city staff is here, you know, they know the city well, um we have relationships with agencies, the extent, you know, where we can help just make sure the communication flow and engagement between, you know, county agencies um that are kind of the the gateway or the hurdles here, um to the extent we can help help, I always say not navigate them, just make sure communication keeps on flowing uh from the county, uh you know, we're here to support that. I mean, on your end, and so we're here, you know, as a city to support that. Um, on your end, I mean, I think we would continue to appreciate con- consistent and clear communication about what's going on. I mean, we get, this property has been you know, been basically here for a while, uh under I F G's um purview and we get a lot of questions about how things are moving or why they're not moving and, you know, good communication from you guys is very helpful and both communicating to our community, the project that, you know, you're gonna be building and then also helping um move things along as well. So just, you know, I wanna reiterate what Valerie said and probably what other council members are gonna echo uh as well, so thank you.
Okay, thank you Jared, Luke. Oh, sorry, Luke, in the middle of a sip.
No, you're fine. Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, appreciate uh everyone coming by to talk to us this afternoon. Um, I'm gonna have a series of questions here, um and they're just to make sure I can be ed- well educated on where we are. Um, when did you learn of the flood plain issue and that this was gonna be an issue?
About a year ago, um our um, so we uh submitted a letter to um, a request letter to Deep I and that's typical letter to uh see if uh they call the flood player, uh flood plain um assessment letter and they told me um you need to check um the drainage area because the project is really, doesn't look like it's in the flood plain from the first glance, it's a dry and no stream in the back. Uh, but the 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 method they use is the drainage area, if it's bigger than fifty acre, that discharge to the lowest point. And we measured that with the county and it's a little bit over fifty, it's a sixty acre and put the project into a flood plain study. And and that's what we started a little over a year uh from, from now ago.
Okay, and when you learned that it was gonna be a little bit over, you know, that you were, that you were needed to do the flood plain study, um how, like? So my concern here is less than a year ago, you came to us. And you came to us with a pretty detailed timeline of permitting. And you seemed very confident at the timeline that you expressed in that meeting. Um, and I think it was construction to start in the summer. And during that meeting, no one said there's this floodplain issue, and we're not sure of what's gonna happen, um, and yet you just told me that you knew about this issue a year ago. And so I have concerns, I have concerns of trust right now. Because you had a very discreet timeline, we walked through it last time you were here. And now it's like, oh, there's this big issue, and we think it's gonna be another year. And so that's difficult for me as an elected official to trust that this is like going to happen. So with the current floodplain issue, I need to know very concretely how long is it gonna take to get over the floodplain issue? What is the risk that you cannot get through it? I heard you say there are three very discreet requirements, I need to know what those three requirements are. So it's sort of three questions, what are the three requirements to get over this floodplain issue? What's the like risk here of the project not being able to go through? And what's the, what's the timeline? So if you can answer those three questions to the best of your knowledge, I'd appreciate that.
So give me one minute, Luke, I just wanted to make sure, put ten minutes on the clock. Can I have a motion to put ten minutes on the clock?
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved a second in discussion. Objection, abstentions, hearing none, uh, ten minutes have been put on the clock. And uh, Mr. um, Iliad, um, do you have, um, so you heard the three questions from the council member? Do you, um, can you please go ahead and address them?
Yes, I think a year ago, when I uh, I was talking about this project, we did not have the floodplain study in details done. So we did not know the extent of those lines are shown here, and the impact uh, to the project, so uh, that wasn't done, we we knew, but we did not do it, it's an extensive analysis, it's uh, two hundred and twenty-five pages. Uh, available for the counties, they wanna see it. There's a lot of hydrology and hydraulic analysis, complicated watershed, I can send that to you to review it, uh. Takes significant amount of time, that's number one, and why we did not know, uh, because those lines were not established at that time. The three parameters that are difficult to meet in a site condition like this is, number one, all finished floor elevation needs to be above the water surface elevation, because the new owner cannot be in a flood. Um, the second parameter is uh, we don't raise the water surface elevation, because those lines are in existing condition flooding people, we cannot increase that, it will be a lawsuit against the county. If that happens. The third requirement is um, I go to the previous map. This dashed area is a water was pushed out. Cause that's a full, that's a water filling this area, when I put a building here, I push it out to the north. I need to give that back onsite. And I had to work with the architect to provide an area below, it's in cellar one, below the driveway. And you see it in dashed the area here to to compensate, they call compensatory storage. I take storage, I give storage onsite, connected to the back, and that was a challenge also to work with the architects to make changes to the site to the building. Um, now, the three parameters are met. The county is reviewing that, and we need their approval.
Okay, that's really helpful, to know that you were able to meet those three conditions. So we're waiting on the county, then it seems like based on the conversation we had before you laid out a permitting process for deep pi pi final approval for Prince George's County Soil Conservation for W S S C, it sounds like none of that has happened yet because of this flood issue. But it sounds like to your knowledge, you have met the three conditions required, and it's just a matter of the county agreeing, and we don't do, I know you said earlier, you get like a, like, like, they support the project, but like, do we, do we know that by the letter of the law, we've met the three conditions and it should be good, or is it like you never know, because people could could interpret things differently?
The, uh, so again, um, I don't have all the options to work with, because the entire project is being developed, but to the best of the analysis we did and our experience, we think we met all the conditions, the county still needs to review all the numbers. And um, tell us what they have, um, as a comment, they already reviewed it twice, and they're reviewing it this, last week and this week. Um, so final approval from them is definitely needed, uh, before I can move forward. I personally feel good, I have a big experience working on these type of project, this is one of the very complicated, just because I don't have room to do anything. But uh, uh, but I know what they're looking for, and uh, we, we gave him what we, what we can. Uh, the number shows we meet the requirement, and we we will see what they say.
So Luke, if you're gonna wrap up whatever you is, cause I wanna make sure to respect the time, and we'll open another round of questions if if you guys want before we go to the staff, but I wanna make sure at least I'm respectful of time, but um, to add to this, I would say that can you please submit those documents that were submitted to the county, to our team, so that we're also evaluating, because it sounds to me part of the line of question that um, Councilmember Cheswick is is hinting at is the fact that the communication between the city and your team needs to be improved, because the minute you found this, you should have communicated directly to us. So that we knew there was another caveat that could potentially delay this project. One, not just inform us that it was gonna potentially be delayed, but also same time to figure out if there's any way we could know what it is, so that we could better, uh, you know, assess for any other situation or support in any other way. So if you guys could submit whatever you submitted to the county to us as well, so that way, if we need to advocate or or get the support, we know also what we're talking about, because if not, if not, it sounds like this is very, um, not parallel working and very disorganized, so we can only support as much as we know. And and at this point, if the communication outlets are not going both ways, it's just not gonna work, because at this point it does not sound that you informed the city, that there was a water plane, um, that will cause for extra timing to happen. Okay? So Luke, I'm gonna go back if if anything will answer, so now I'm gonna go ahead and pass it to you, and then I'll open another round, okay?
Yeah, I would just, and by just saying thank you, I don't mean to be like confrontational, but I really appreciate your time and echo everybody else at wanting to work with the city, how we can help you get this going as much as we can, totally agree with that. But just keep the communications going, and maybe you can work with staff on giving us a draft timeline, and send that to us, so that we're all aware of what the expected course of action is here, thank you.
Thank you, go ahead, Daniel.
Thank you, um, uh, and yes, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Isaac for coming, um, last year, it was about this time you came, and we were told that we would see movement, you know, we would see action like by November, and um, we didn't hear or see anything. Um, so my question, and and everybody else on council, including the mayor, has asked and addressed a lot of the things that were on my mind. Um, my request would be, can you come back in a couple of months and give us an update instead of us having to wait a year? So like in say May, can you come back and let us know where we're standing, where we're at? Um, what we're looking at, um, so to uh, the mayor's point, if you need help with uh, like Alma or one of our other staff, um, members to move forward, we know this sooner, and we can get this ball rolling faster. Um, also, um, I know, I don't know how many pages are in this report you have over here, but is there any way you can send that report to the city? Cause I personally would like um, a copy of some of these maps so that I can see it, I'm a hands-on kind of person, I like to see things. Um, so if you could do that and come back to us in a couple of months with an update on where you're at, um, what 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 is blocking you, um, what your plans are. And that, I would greatly appreciate it, I know the residents and other members on council would. Also, I have one serious question for you. What is the worst case scenario with this project as it stands right now?
So if the project will not move forward if the floodplain is not, is not approved. Uh, so that's, I can see that, um, so but uh I I I feel, I feel positive of this approval, but again, we need a formal approval, um. As I mentioned earlier, um, the new buildings in the floodplain are not permitted. Um unless we meet the three conditions, and we are working on, we worked on these three conditions and provided them to the county. And I offered to uh, discuss that with the reviewer, um, I spoke with him yesterday. Uh, his name is Salman Barber, and I met with his boss, uh, Ray De Guzman, few months ago. Um, and um, to explain the approach, and what we've done, um. So, um, this is the critical path, is this approval. Um, I don't see any other risks, the other, the other designs are atypical designs. Um, there was the stonewater management, uh, that was difficult, because also there was no room for it, but we got that approved. Uh, using um, other features on onsite, including uh uh, green roof and underground systems. I would say, I would say this is the biggest.
Ho- hold on one second, um. Hold on one second, I'll go ahead, Mr. Isaac, you could continue.
Yeah, so uh, I, as I said, this is the, this is uh, the 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 most critical approval that we need for this project from civil, civil design.
And and you're you're fairly po- you're fairly positive that it's going to go through with this. You're gonna, you feel fairly positive that this is going to go through at this phase. That you've met all three, and that we're gonna see movement on this property. Cause my concern is, what's gonna happen with this property if it is completely denied? I have a lot of residents, both in Ward One and Ward Two, um, comment about that all the time, you know, what's gonna happen if this doesn't happen? So when I ask you about worst case scenario, I'm, my my point is if the floodplain prevents you from developing on this land, what is the worst case scenario? What do we what's the worst case scenario the city and the council would have presented to us with this property?
So question, the person in the phone, um, is one of the other presenters? That was trying to answer the question?
Yeah, Bill Maiden.
Bill, is that you, do you have any feedback on on the question or anything that you heard from the other elected officials asking or addressing?
Yeah, Bill Maiden is here, yeah, finally can hear about it, can see anybody. Um, we feel good about getting it approved, but like the civil engineer said, we need confirmation from the county. The um, the design that the civil engineer has, and he and I worked together on this uh, is a good design. We feel positive about it, and it's been received preliminary in a positive way. Uh, um, there are other buildings built in the floodplain. So, uh, and the floodplain takes up most of this site and the adjoining sites. So 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 we feel that it's gonna get approved, we just have to work through the process. The good news is that the other parts of the plans have been approved already, so the critical path here is the floodplain and the civil engineering part of that floodplain.
I'm gonna put a pause because we have run out of time, and I wanna make sure to be respectful to go ahead and allocate more time. Um, so can I have a motion, the first to have ten more minutes on the clock?
Seven.
Second.
Is it probably second? Um, any discussion, objection, attention, hearing none, uh, we're gonna add ten more minutes to the
What I want to do is, uh, we will stay in touch with the city of Mount Rainier. And if there's any um, assistance that uh, uh, the city can give us with getting the exemption approved, we would appreciate it. But like I said, we have a good design, um. Uh, we work together, myself and the civil engineer on this, we 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 wrote the exemption justification. And and like I said, there are other buildings already built in in Mount Rainier, in the floodplain, so so I I feel that they will approve it, but we will not know because we can't control the county, and, but we will not know until we get the signatures. Now, the timeframe on that, uh, I can't speak to that. Um, I know that the county works at their own pace. We can, and and that, that may be a a way that the um, city of Mount Rainier can help us out to 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 get the county to make the reviews a little faster. Um, we respond almost immediately, the any comments they make. And this has been a long ongoing process with the floodplain and other things, this is a complicated site to design. And everything that is affected, well, well, let me say it like this, that floodplain affects everything in the building. Because it has to work around that floodplain. So, uh, uh, but but again, I feel positive, I feel that it's gonna work, it's gonna get approved. And um, and 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 I think the civil engineer can speak to maybe the timeframe based on his experience. Uh, but that timeframe can also uh, uh, be influenced by intervention from the city of Mount Rainier.
So, thank you so much, so a couple of things, I think what you're hearing heavily is like communication needs to happen. So what we need from you guys, if it's not tonight, by tomorrow, if you guys, please send that information that will send to the county, to our city manager, Mr. Kamali. Um, his email is on the box. Right now, we need to make sure that, um, at least our team is understanding more by looking at documents that were submitted to figure out if there's anything we can do to help. We fully understand that the floodplain, um, is important, because it can, it will if it's not done correctly, will create damage to the houses that are nearby, and also the building and the infrastructure, so we know it's a very critical step, so thank you for make sure you're addressing it, and you're following through with the things that they're asking you. Our concern is more heavily, one, um, in making sure communication happens, so that way we could support. But at the same time, um, we need to make sure we figure out, um, what what is the best bet when it comes to, um, this building. So if this is like, eh, mind you that, our team has worked with the county when it comes to areas that have, you know, high flood spaces, and so on, and so on, and so on, right? So they might be able to potentially give you some information or hints, or we could like also reach out. Have you guys even informed us of this? I I was actually meeting with, um, um, acting, uh, county executive three weeks ago. I could have addressed her team about this specific thing, but I can do much to help if I'm not aware. So if you could submit those documents by tomorrow the latest, it will it will help to at least like you get our team and myself activated to follow up with what the stuff you have done, okay? And the other question, when it comes to this, um, the foot plane, right? You talked something about like the alley being like where the, is the alley where where you're assuming some of the water is gonna be released at? And two, is the area back there able to maintain that much water that might be coming from that many units in that building?
Yeah, so the, the water path is in the alley here, the center of the alley more or less is where the center of the water goes, and there are uh, storm drain system here, uh, and that's that's part, your questions are part of the study that we did, and the county wants to make sure there's no adverse impact to uh, the existing condition, so proposed condition with the with the development should not add uh, any harm as of the water being pushed back, uh, as I mentioned earlier. Uh, today's time, uh, uh, in today's condition, existing condition, water comes here freely and fill up this, and then once the rain once the storm uh, ends, it will go back and continue. Uh, putting the, putting the development will prevent from, prevent that from happening, because uh, we we block it with the walls here.
Yeah, because I think it's not just about today, um, climate, it's about the next twenty or thirty or fifty years that come around. You know, we have seen that some of this water storm rains, um, that are damaging, like, you know, a lot of the cities are coming faster and sooner. Then, you know, like one rain that will lasted, like, you know, come every fifty years, now it's coming more often, right? So I wanna make sure that that is taken into consideration. So I wanna make sure that that is taken into consideration. If not, we're gonna have to be making repairs to that space um, very rapidly. Um, we had, what, less than two years ago? A storm that like basically flooded a bunch, bunch of our city, right? So I wanna make sure that, you know, it does not, the part of like the plan that is created. It's also addresses like, you know, what it looks like in the future for that area, not just what it looks for it right now.
That's a good, good point. Uh, thank you for breaking it up. Um, the project adre- uh, comply with the latest requirement from the county and consider the climate change. Uh, they asked me to increase my storm. Um. My storm uh, water, uh, rainfall uh, to accommodate for climate change that will look into the future. Uh, I can assure you, if this is get approved, uh, no additional water will be uh, in the back. Uh, from what's today until the, the, the few, then the, the future that we know, at least twenty or fifty years. I'm not sure, but the climate change is being considered.
Perfect. And last thing to ask you, you mentioned quickly, hold on, you mentioned quickly that there's some permits and certifications that you've gotten. Since we last spoke, can you also address those? Because I don't want it to, if there's our stuff that you've done aside from this plan, I wanna make sure that. You know, the community also knows that there's other work that has been done in the meantime and not just waiting on, on this, on the floodplain only.
The, the floodplain approval is critical for other agencies to, to review. I s- I submitted to the park and planning and they asked me for the floodplain approval. So that stopped the, the review. Uh, we uh, Deep Eye stopped the final approval uh, for Deep Eye because of this also.
Okay, perfect. So, um.
And one, and one thing I want to make clear is that the building has been approved by the third party review group. So that's significant progress made. The, the mechanical, the structural, the, the fire, the um, the architectural part, the, the ADA handicap stuff. The um, uh, plumbing, uh, well, the, the, the um, uh, 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 I think I mentioned electrical. And, and again, but all that has been approved already. What we are doing now is in the process of coordinating that with. The floodplain stuff in case the county comes back with some comments that would affect some of those things. But, but that piece has, and, and thi- this has happened since we met last time. That piece is that, that part of the building itself is already approved.
Perfect. And that's the reason why I also wanted to give you an opportunity to let us know what else, because if not, it sounds like. Nothing's being done except for this floor plan, right? So we do appreciate that some other steps have been taken to get us where we need to. And they'll be adjusted once that floor plan is, you know, approved. We understand that we wanna make sure that there are other parallels moving. So I'm gonna open up the floor to Mr. Kamali if you wanna ask something and then I do have, um. I know Ron and Alma are both here. So go ahead, Mr. Kamali. Any questions they have or anything else to add?
No, I just wanna say thank you to Mr. Fati and his team, but I do appreciate as the mayor and council mentioned to stay in communication with us and. I do appreciate if you could provide me the case number for the permit that you're applying or the floodplain. Then we can have Mr. Hopkins and y- y- you know, reach out to his connection. As long as you provide the case number, that would be helpful. Maybe we can help on our end. Alright, so I see it. Okay?
Yeah, I will be sending that to you uh, in, in an email tomorrow and then case number is on the front page.
If you could do me a favor, you know, just the monthly update, you know, send it to me, then I can share it with mayor and council. That would be very helpful. We know where, where you are with the project and how long it's gonna take to get the final appro- the final approval. But we just, you know, we wanna make sure you guys, you know, keep us in the loop, please. I have no further question, Mayor.
Okay, so let me put five minutes on the, on the clocks. At least we get a chance to community members if they have any questions. Can I have five minutes on the clock, please? Can I have a motion to add five minutes to the clock?
Sub moved.
Second.
It was supposed to be second. Thank you. Um, any discussion, objection, extension, hearing, none? We're adding five more minutes to the clock. Okay, so I have Alma and Hopkins. Um, Alma, I'm sorry, Director Farafino, Director, uh, Hopkins. Any questions for uh, Mr. Fati and his team? We're good? Oh, go ahead, uh.
Well, I have no questions at this time. Thank you very much for presenting and my department will do everything possible to expedite your permits.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hopkins. Um, Director Farafino as well? Go ahead.
Yes, good evening. Um, thank you all for having us. Um, I don't have any further questions. Um, thank you to Mr. Fati also and his team. And um, we just look forward to, um, I guess, keep conducting a good um, relationship and hoping that um. We can keep that um, property maintained.
Okay, perfect. Thank you both. And um, Mr. Fati, I'm gonna open up to the community to see if they have any questions, but. Please, yeah, we're, we're, we're definitely happy that you guys are here and you're reviewing and you're part of the community, right? And we wanna make sure that, um, you know, you're able to utilize the support that we can give you, right? Because if not, um, we're gonna continue going up in um, in circles and that's not what we want. We wanna make sure the project succeeds, cause. I think since day one, we have been very supportive of having this project here in the city and have your team here. And we strongly believe that if we're communicating on two way, we could be able to utilize whatever. Means we have as a city to be able to support you guys in trying to get this project completed. Okay, so um, is there any?
Mayor, thank you so much indeed. Uh, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'm gonna let you go because I know you have, um, you, you're fasting and I wanna be respectful of that as well.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Of course. So is there any community questions that we have? Uh, put your name, last name, um, block and street number in the chat? I don't see no one. Okay, so um, Mr. Fati and your whole entire team, thank you for joining us tonight. We definitely appreciate you guys being here. We look forward to continuing communicating. And please know that our team is like supportive to try to get this stuff through and um, and finding ways to collaborate, but um, happy fasting and um, thank you for being here tonight, okay?
Thank you so much indeed.
Alright, have a good night.
Have a wonderful night. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Um. Meli, do you got that share access back? Thank you, Meli. Okay, perfect. And thank you everybody for your questions there. They were outstanding. Um, okay, let me see. Okay, item number four, presentation discussion on building application for. Thirty-four oh five Easter Avenue. Uh, the mayor council will have a presentation for the, from the owner of thirty-four oh five Easter Avenue. So. Director Farafino from Code, you're here. Go ahead and um, give us um, a bit of information and we'll open it up to the, to the owner or the architect or whoever's here. Okay?
Alright, thank you so much. Um, so we're here uh, once again presenting a property for a. Building application. Um, this has been approved by county already and we're talking about thirty-four oh five Eastern Avenue. Um, we have uh, Mr. Nielsen Canangas um, here to do a small presentation on this property. Um, and I know that um, this will not be the first property. I know he has a second one coming in. So, Mr. Nielsen, um, the floor is yours.
Go ahead, Mr. Nielsen. Good af- oh, good evening and thank you for joining us. Are you here? He might have left, Alma, because I don't see him here. Hmm. So can you tell us a little bit about the property and what the changes are there being asked? And um, to point out again, it was already addressed by, I mean, it was already approved by the county. And for those that um, are not aware how the process is, like once the county approved, they still have to come to the city. We bring it up to a meeting so that when the neighbors notice a project that is being um, that is gonna be starting. And usually by the next day, um, our code department gives them the green light to be able to move, but. A lot of the questions that we address with the owners have already been addressed by our code department, but we usually like. Read right through them. And so that way there is uh, also a record that it was addressed by us. But go ahead, Alma, can you tell us a little bit about what the changes are, internal, external? And anything you could fit us up with?
Sure. So um, I know he was here earlier. I'm not sure whether he, he had an emergency or anything happening. Um, but basically what um, comes down to, he's doing an interior um, renovation. Both um, in the second level and al- also doing a basement renovation. There's really nothing being done on the exterior um, of the property. Um, first floor, second floor, um, he's only replacing windows, doors. Um, and just literally finishing up um, the interior of um, the property and also basement finishing. Um, apart from that, like I, I mentioned, um, they were approved by the county already. Um, we did get them to actually uh, do all the permits as uh, is required. And he was given all the um, explanations on, you know, everything that is required from the city as well.
Okay, um, so no need to go to the sign review board? Everything's internal? Do you know if any heavy, heavy machinery is gonna be used?
No, no.
Okay, is there any properties in the, in the facility that we need to be concerned um, with whatever's being done internally in the house?
No, no, basically no. Um, we looked at the property um, just a few weeks ago. Um, before he uh, finalized, got approved by the county and um, there's not really anything external that we, we should be worrying about.
Okay, perfect. So uh, Luca, I was gonna make a comment to you. Um, what's it called? Jared did the spiel um, last time? He did pretty good. He didn't do too bad. No pressure, Luke. I mean, the same pressure you felt when um, when it came to like Brian uh, listening to your spiel, right? It wa- it was a little bit hilarious. Uh, but, okay, so council, um, any questions? Uh, are we good to uh, let Alma do the, the green light to let go? If we're good, raise your thumb and then we'll pass to the next item. Luca, see you're good. Valerie, how are you? Jared, Danielle? Uh, Jared, you good? If you're putting your thumbs up, it wasn't a screen. Alright, perfect. So um. Alma, since there is only internal work and uh, nothing that, you know, we usually flag on. And you're good with it? We could go ahead and groom the green light, okay? I know he was here, but you know, he must have like hung out or whatever. Okay?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And if anything, you see a flag, you let us know and then he'll move, who, he'll be moved to the next meeting, but. If you're good, I mean, nothing on the documents that we receive and, and even on here, raise the flag that we might be concerned about. Okay? Perfect. Thank you so much, Alma. And please thank you, your whole entire team as well. I know they do a lot of great work. Alright?
We will do. Have a good evening.
Perfect. Thank you. Alright, so we're moving on to item number five, presentation discussion and community meeting. And ribbon cutting ceremony for Richardson Park. Mary Benitez will have a discussion with council regarding. Line item five, five oh five, city sponsored meetings to find a community meeting and ribbon cutting ceremony for Richardson Park. So, I guess it's me. Um, very uh, tight knit, right, for the last two years. I've been going to Tommestone, Caesar Chavez and Mount Rainier Elementary. As well as Highsville Middle School and Northwestern, right, uh, to talk to our. Younger residents when it came to redeveloping Richardson Park. Um, the staff has been very keen making sure that we knew, one, what the process was. Make sure that they knew from design to purchasing, to be able to have like permits, um, everything. So we've held at least. I would like to say in the last two years, maybe ten meetings or more. Um, uh, with each of the schools, right, uh, when it comes to then uh, finding ways to design this park. So Richardson Park is a park that is the only park the city owns. And part of the things that we wanted to work with them was, one, to make sure they knew what the, what it looks like when a budget. When it looks like, you know, what the work the city manager does, Code, Public Works, and obviously like our role as legislators, right? So I'm happy to say that the project has been completed. And part of the project that uh, we had discussed was having a final event uh, in order to make sure that. You know, they get to celebrate the location and get to talk about their experience and at the same time, um. Feel proud for the work that they did. But down to the color of the slides, what was in it, um, it has been very, very uh, kid led. So my ask is basically to utilize my line item, you know, that is like bundle between all of you guys, right? In order to be able to have a community event at the Richardson Park. Able to buy a couple of things for, you know, for the, for the residents and mainly, you know, like a lot of kids are gonna be coming. And celebrate their success of their first project. And to add, Eric Halle that has uh, been part of this project has been uh, sort of known as the junior mayor, so it's been the extension of our project, but. It's been two years in the work. Big thank you also to Mr. Kamali, to uh, Rosio as well. Uh, Code, uh, Director of uh, Public Works and our whole entire team. For making sure that at all times, um, they had honest conversations along with me, with the kids. And what the process is and what they can and cannot do. And this is basically their park and we're happy to say it's already done and we're ready to celebrate. So, this is, oof, sorry. Um. Alma, I think you still have the share. It's not giving me the agenda. I'm not sure what's going on. Alright, so this is basically like, you know, an approval to be able to utilize the funds for the Richardson Park, a ribbon cutting. Community event and celebration. Okay? Where are you at? And. And this is, um, okay, so any questions regarding the comments I just made? Uh, Luca, I'm gonna go to you and I'll maybe wear around.
No, nothing. Totally supportive. Um, I know you've done a lot of work over the years to melt, make sure Richardson Park is a lot better, so totally supportive. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Valerie?
Um, I, same. I think it's great that we're gonna be having ribbon cutting and getting everybody involved, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Danielle and Jared?
Yeah, no, I'm put, toiling in support of it. I'm looking forward to seeing it.
Uh, Jared?
Yep, I got everyone's thoughts. So, great, thank you.
No, you're like, oh no, please don't come and celebrate with us. Bl- breaking all of you guys' arms, right? Alright, perfect. Thank you guys so much. So we're gonna start on. On the preparations for it, but you know, we wanted to make sure we followed procedure and this is why we're here in this meeting. Okay? Alright, perfect. Anything else with this, Meli, that I need to uh, present or we're good with this?
We're good with that, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Meli. So thank you guys so much. So um, once we have the specific date and the preparations, we'll let the community know and. The kids are excited because I just went to visit them about three, three weeks, two, three weeks ago? I'm sorry, my weeks are all blended it again, so. Um, they're excited to know that this is coming and um, they were happy to figure out like and we're looking into what other project, um. So Mr. Kamali and I are gonna sit down. We will see and figure out what other project we're gonna get them involved, but. This is taking a lot of positive work and a lot of patience from the staff to um, to be able to sort all the information and surveys and, and. Data that the kids were providing to us. Alright, perfect. Thank you guys so much. Alright, item number six, proclamation proclaiming May seventeen, twenty twenty-five as kids to day park. I'll present a proclamation to you guys. It's something that we have done yearly. Right? And it's encouraging uh, kids and families, adults of all ages, right? Uh, people that are, kids are hard to go out to parks and enjoy the outdoors to make sure they're, you know, happy people. Alright? So this is the proclamation um, in front of you. Uh, Valerie, you wanna go ahead and, and give it a read through?
Uh, sure. Uh, proclamation pro- proclaiming May seventeen, twenty twenty-five as Kids to Parks Day in the city of Mount Rainier. Whereas May seventeen, twenty twenty-five is the fifteenth Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust. Held annually on the third Saturday of May and whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors. And visit local parks, public lands and waters and whereas we should encourage children to be a more active lifestyle to combat. Issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension and high co- hyper. I don't even know how to say that word. Hypercholesteral amenia and, and whereas uh, Kids to Park Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. And whereas Kids to Park Day will recognize the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors and. Now, therefore.
I'll read that one. I know it's weird when I, when you ask this as a third person, right? And that therefore, I Selena, Amercina Benitez do hereby proclaim, uh, May seventeen as Kids to Park Day in the city of Mount Rainier. And obviously you'll see my signature at the end. Our wonderful clerk is gonna be submitting this to the national registry, so that way they account for us being able to do this. Um, part of a lot of the work that I, I happily do is join various organizations. And uniting when it comes to like either green initiatives, you know, when it comes to um. You know, uh, safety, when it comes to schools and stuff like that, it's a way to be able to. You know, uh, safety, when it comes to schools and stuff like that, it's a way to be able to be part of a larger group. In order to make sure to bring awareness to the things that, um, that we need. So this is part of the things that we do. We write proclamations, we sign letters of support, um. But it's heavily also for them to know that this is important to us and it's, and it's also very tied to the values of Mount Rainier as a whole. Alright, so Meli, you could, um, I'll send you the link if you don't have it, uh, to where to submit the proclamation in behalf of the city, okay? Alright, thank you guys so much. Alright, moving on to the next one, presentation and discussion on resolution number oh one dash twenty twenty-five. Establishment of the Mount Rainier Community Garden Committee. Uh, the mayor council will have a discussion resolution, um, regarding resolution oh one dash twenty twenty-five. Establishing the Mount Rainier Day Community Garden Committee. So Valerie, this is your item. Go ahead.
Um, yes, thank you. Um, so one of the things that I've worked to do with all the committees and groups that I've been working with, um, for the city. Um, is to make sure that we're following, uh, the guidance and protocols so that we're, we have meeting minutes, we have agendas posted. We're, you know, following the, the right rules to make sure that when we are voting on funds to be expended, that we have backup for that and things like that. Um, and so one of the, uh, groups that I'm liaising with is the Community Garden Committee. Um, and, you know, for the last year or so, we've been meeting here and there. It's kind of been, it's more of a, a group of volunteers that are dedicated to this space. And so, you know, while we appreciate all the work that they've done, I wanna make sure that we are officially established as a committee, um, in, in the city. Um, so that when we go after funding or when we are, um, you know, asking Public Works team to help support. Or to build something that we, that we actually have that, um, in the record going forward. Um, and so this resolution would, uh, create, um, and officially establish. I mean, the community garden was started in twenty thirteen. Um, and it has been maintained for, you know, twelve years now, and it's really been a great addition to the city. But I wanna make sure that we officially have the, the record here that this committee is established and that going forward, we can appoint people to it officially. Um, rather than just having a, a group of volunteers that work on this, so that's.
So Valerie, can I ask for you to read the resolution and as you're getting ready, um. I definitely wanna point out that, uh, one, thank you for making sure you're like helping with, you know, making the groups like, you know, more professionally and, and business, um. Tidy in order to make sure that, you know, as the city, we're able to follow through the various things. And this tied us very much with the work that we've been doing for a couple of years to make sure that all of our committees are within order. And, you know, working cohesively, uh, and closely with the city. So I definitely appreciate you, you're doing that extra work because, um. It's needed and it also gives recognition to those wonderful volunteers that have been giving so many hours to our city, um. And make sure we follow, uh, we follow up through it and, you know, we've done a lot of like, you know, checkings on it. So, um, if there's any other one, we definitely, you know, we're working through it. Alright, Valerie, so I give you a few minutes to breathe. Go ahead, it's all yours.
Um, yep, the establishment of the Mount Rainier Community Garden Committee, whereas section four oh two, number six of the city code. States that the mayor and council have the authority to create committees and appoint citizens to those committees. And whereas section four oh two, number thirty-six of the city code states that the mayor and council have the authority to establish and maintain gardens. And whereas the Mount Rainier Community Garden was initially established in twenty thirteen on Thirty First Street between Wyndham Road and Rundle Road. But the Mount Rainier Community Garden Committee was not formally established. And whereas the mayor and council recognized the need to maintain and support the Mount Rainier, uh, community garden to improve the quality of life for Mount Rainier residents. And now therefore be it resolved, the Mount Rainier Community Garden is established as an official committee of the city of Mount Rainier. Now therefore be it, be it further resolved, each fiscal year, the city manager's proposed budget shall include funding for the committee to maintain, promote and develop the garden. The committee shall be composed of five members who are appointed to two-year terms by the mayor and council and serve at their pleasure. Should the committee fall below full membership, the city manager shall immediately recruit applicants to fill the vacancy and recommend appointees to the mayor and council. The provisions of this resolutions shall supersede any rules, procedures or resolutions previously, um, approved by the mayor and council of Mount Rainier. This resolution is adopted by the council of the city of Mount Rainier this day of twenty twenty-five.
Perfect. So, thank you so much. So the only thing I want at the end has been adopted by, so that way we're cohesive with the rest of the document, mayors and, and, and council, okay? And city council. So that's the only addition I will go ahead and add to it. Um, does anybody has any edit suggestions? If we're good, we could pass it through to the next step. Are we good, council? Yes, thumbs up. Good, 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 good. Okay, so Valerie, thank you so much for the work put it through. If you could just make that edit. It should be able to move on to the next step when it comes to, um, you know, the next procedure of it, okay? Alright, thank you, Valerie, and thank you to the garden committee, cause definitely, uh, gardens look beautiful in the city because you put a lot of work into them. So I appreciate that. And also like, I know some of them have worked cohesively or they, um, they do double work when it comes to the native, uh, garden network. They not only maintain their own gardens, right, in their homes, right? But they also help the city when it comes to taking care of some other, uh, gardens as well. So thank you guys so much for that. Alright, Valerie. So you ready to move to the next step? Yeah. Alright, perfect. Okay, moving on to the next one. Um, presentation of minutes, right? Uh, the city clerk will present marks for, uh, legislative, uh, meeting minutes. Uh, to the mayor and council, they were in your package. Please let us know if there's any edits. If not, um. Meli, move them on to the next, um, to the, go ahead to the legislative session, okay? Alright, and before I forget, before we adjourn. Can you move the agenda back up, Meli, I mean, to the bottom where the events are at? This is a big reminder of this Saturday. That's what I want to make sure we keep the meeting light as well. Uh, this Saturday, we have the budget, a public hearing for the mayor and council. It is a work session. It is virtually. And it says nine, it starts at nine, it starts at nine thirty. Um, so I will say to you guys, please make sure you guys show up. This is when we go ahead and read the budget. Line item by line item, all the directors come in, our city manager, um, leads the team in making sure that. All directors, all staff are present in order to be able to discuss every line item, but it's a complete read through. That, uh, was adopted a few years back, which helped us. I remember Luke, uh, when we started it, the meetings would sometimes used to go to one o'clock in the morning. So this meeting today will be added another four hours, um, and at the point, um. One of the, one of the bright suggestions I made, just like Luke made the bright suggestions about the priorities, so it's like, can we pull this to a whole day event? So that way we don't have to do four hours after. And from there on, we're happy to say that it was adopted. And all the other council members have followed through in doing this Saturday meeting, which allows the staff not to stay until one o'clock in the morning along with us. But it allows for us to tackle that whole budget, you know, read it through from beginning to end, instead of having four hours or three hours meeting after a long, um, meeting. So please make sure you show up. If not, like, you'll be in our YouTube channel, through our website. I mean, all the information will be there if you guys cannot tune in, but we'll be spending quite a bit of time. Um, it says starts at nine thirty. I've seen other things that said ten o'clock, but we'll be there at nine thirty no matter what. So in saying that, um, it's virtually, we don't have enough room in our tiny little, um. Temporary chambers in order to fit people in. So tune in and listen. I know you guys are all eager to listen to our budget, right? But, uh, the budget could be found online on our website if you guys wanna follow up with it, um, to make life a little bit easier. But it's quite a few hours and every department basically, um, comes in like, you know, in order to speak about their budget and if we have any additional questions. Alright, so can I have a motion to, um, adjourn?
So moved.
Probably moved and second, any discussion? Objection, extension, hearing none. This meeting has come to an end at eighteen. Uh, thank you to our all wonderful staff and all the community. I do see a couple candidates, huh, for elected positions joining us today. We look forward to seeing a lot of you on Saturday as well, alright? But, uh, Mr. Kamali, thank you to you, to the whole entire team, uh, all the directors and staff as well for following through. And all the work that you guys do, because, uh, we definitely, um, are very happy to have all of you. You guys definitely make all of us look good with everything that you guys do. And in the meantime, I will see you guys Saturday and. And Thursday, uh, we're gonna be in Annapolis, also testifying for a couple of bills. Cross over already happened, so. We, we have a lot of work, we have a lot of wonderful work to do to make sure we represent the city. Alright, have a good night, everyone, and I'll see you guys soon, okay?
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, staff. Thank you.